Hey, um, looks like we are back. Welcome back board. I think we have almost all our presenters for the next session at one. So I think we're waiting on. Looks like Ray maybe. Or perhaps he's not coming. If we're ready to go, then I hand it off to Madam Chair.
So the recording's all set?
And we, yes, we are live. We're good to go. Apologies.
Oh, there's Commissioner Phi. I knew I saw her at some place on this screen. So, all right, welcome back everyone to the afternoon portion of the Tuesday, May 17th, 2022 Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. We have just one item on the agenda for this afternoon and thank you Ms. Fuller. There you are for being here as our county administrative officer representative. So we'll switch over to the Interstate Bridge Replacement Project. Proposed Modified Locally Preferred Alternative. I'll turn it over to you Ms. Duffabach because I don't see, oh, there's Mr. Roberts. Take it away Stephen and Company.
Thank you Chair. My video button got buried, so appreciate your patience there. Good afternoon Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Stephen Roberts, Director of Land Use and Transportation for the county. I'm joined, as you said, by Chris Duffabach, our Senior Policy Analyst in Land Use and Transportation, and by Aaron Doyle, Senior Government Relations Manager here who works with us. And we also have representatives, or a representative at least, from the Interstate Bridge Replacement Team, Program Administrator Greg Johnson. He's actually going to do quite a bit of the talking today. We appreciate him being here. We wanted to really just get this topic in front of the board. This is essentially a modified proposal for the Interstate Bridge Replacement Project, a key regional project. The proposal came out just a couple of weeks ago and so we wanted to get this information to you as soon as we could, provide you the opportunity to discuss it and to help just inform upcoming review and discussion of the proposal at J-PAC, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, where Commissioner Phi is your representative and Chair Harrington is the alternate. So I think I've introduced our team members. So the way we want to do this, Chris and Aaron are just going to kick off with just a little bit of local context for you. And then we'll ask Mr. Johnson to run through the IVR presentation and then we'll all collectively be on hand to help answer questions that you may have as we wrap this up. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you Stephen. I think we're ready for the next slide. So thank you. And as Stephen said, our goal today is to share the new locally preferred alternative for the Interstate Bridge Replacement and the process, both the background, the process and the upcoming milestones. And then begin to, the process of identifying your policy position on the bridge project to support your participation in the upcoming meetings. J-PAC is having an introduction to it. On Thursday, they will be asked to take action on to endorse this alternative in June. It will likely come up at M-PAC and at the Region One meetings as well as other forums and inform future legislative and funding strategies which you'll hear about from Aaron Doyle as well. Basically an update, next slide. So I think everybody knows who the Interstate Bridge is. It replace, this project would replace these two drawbridges on the interstate system. And this map is from, prepared from the Urban Mobility Office from the Oregon Department of Transportation. And it just shows the regional investments in this area. And this is just a context map. It shows that this is a very significant project on the state bridge, but it's not the only project on the interstate on I-5 right now. We have ongoing the Rose Quarter, Southwest Corridor project further down here. You can't see my, you know where it is. You can't see my little arrow, I guess. And then the Boone Bridge. So we have a lot going on. I just wanted this map to illustrate that this is part of a multiple improvements plan for the region. And the next slide. So the question is, the Interstate Bridge is not in Washington County. So what does that really mean for us? Well, I think, as you've said before in your state and federal legislative agenda, that it is important to have a functional multimodal transportation system. Our residents, employees and businesses depend on a functional system and it's to support the economic, social and community wellbeing. The Interstate Five Bridge is well-known for its problems and needs, I believe. And I think as we have seen, all experienced, I believe, the traffic backups on the Interstate Bridge that can really impact access to and through the region. And I think we've even all seen how backups can even extend out of 405 and then you start risking the link to the Highway 26 directly to Washington County. So you'll hear more about this from the Interstate Bridge team, but I think it's just a reminder of the importance, even though it's not in Washington County. The next slide, please Megan. The, the risk, what does this mean? The IBR team is going to cover the funding sources. I think it's just a reminder here that it's going to cost a lot. Aaron, do you want to add anything at this point about the legislative session?
Yeah, thank you Chris. So the risk for Washington County is kind of the risk for the region. And it is mostly financial at this point. And it's going to be a significant conversation at the 2023 legislative session. And it's going to impact the options for other revenue sources that might otherwise be discussed related to other regional projects. And Oregon has yet to identify its source for the estimated $1 billion in costs to the state. And given that there are leadership changes that are going to happen at the state level due to the election cycle that we're on and the revenue raising requirement of a two-thirds majority vote in favor across both bodies, this is going to be a long and challenging conversation for that leadership. However, if the state does fail to find its billion dollars and the project fails to move forward, the financial risk is also high because we have used federal dollars to this point on this project. And we will have, we collectively as these states will have to reimburse that back to the federal government. So as we walk into the 2023 session, there is a very high stakes conversation about how we will approach funding. And with that, I'll ask us to move to the next slide and send it back to Chris.
Thanks Aaron. Next slide, yeah. So the Greg Johnson today will be able to recap the project history and provide background information. He'll be able to describe the locally preferred alternative, share the extensive community input that they've received, and again, go through the decision-making process, the next steps ahead of us. Little, next slide please. I think upcoming actions, just to remind you about there, June is scheduled for J-PAC action on this. In June and July, you'll be hearing from the various partners that have been part of the developing this preferred alternative, seek their endorsement. And I think it's just important to remember that these transportation projects take a long time. And while this is an important action to endorse the locally preferred alternative, what it really does is initiate more work. This is not the end. This is helping focus on the future design work, the budget constructions schedules. There will have to be a additional supplemental environmental analysis done on the preferred. And of course, as Aaron mentioned, more work on legislative funding strategy. So keep in mind, important step, not the last step. Next slide. Think, so we, we just wanted to help frame this presentation for you. Again, we saw this just come out within two weeks ago. And I think any of you will remember that the issues that emerged during the Columbia River Crossing study, there were some significant issues where there was disagreement. And from what we've seen so far, I can say that staff support this locally preferred alternative for its ability to achieve the balanced solution to, to address these challenging issues. You'll remember a key part was the number of traffic lanes. There is a recommendation for three plus one auxiliary lane. You'll remember there was a lot of controversy over the kind of transit investment. There is a proposal for a transit investment that includes light rail and the C-Trans system that is supported by the city of Vancouver. Access had to get to it from Hayden Island was a major problem that the, the current team has a new proposal for. And you'll see that they have, the team has incorporated equity and climate goals into the recommendation. So that's, you know, based on what we've seen, it, it really addresses major concerns that were left hanging from the last project. Aaron, do you want to talk a little bit more about the legislative strategy?
Sure. Just really briefly, as we work, as we start the planning for the 2023 Agenda Building work that this board is going to be undertaking, this is going to have to be part of that conversation. And we'll really need to be ready to work with our regional and state partners on how to find the, the solutions for the funding strategy. But in addition to that, we are going to have to continue to work and make sure that Washington County voices are heard throughout this process at the regional level because we are impacted, as Chris pointed out at the beginning, even if it's not directly within the county, it is part of the overall system. And when a system fails in one place, that flows over into other places. So as we move forward, we need to make sure that all of those pieces are a part of our legislative strategy when we go down for the 2023 session. And with that, I will get back to you. And next slide.
I think we have one last slide and that is, as you listen to Greg Johnson's presentation, we're asking for you to think about your support for the proposed Modified Locally Preferred Alternative. And if not, what modifications would you like to see or what additional information would you like to inform, to inform your position? And I'm sure Greg and his team can answer all your questions and describe this more. So with that, I'd like to introduce them and I'm hoping this introduction helped set the context for their presentation.
Good afternoon. I want to extend my thanks to the Washington County staff for, for, as you said, set in great context to why we are here. So Madam Chair, members of the Washington County Board of Commissioners, it's my privilege to be here to share with you of what's going on at the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program. So let's go to the next slide. So this is a slide that many of you have seen before. It's our timeline. It shows what happened with the prior planning effort that ended in 2014. The governor's restart of this program in 2019. I was brought on board in July of 2020. And we have been scheming through the planning and environmental phases to, to the point of where we are reaching a Recommended Modified Locally Preferred Alternative, or LPA. So that is our primary reason for, for being here today is to come and discuss that locally preferred alternative and then talk about what the next steps are in the process. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So as I spoke, the governors Brown and Inslee signed a memorandum of intent to revive this program because recognizing the, the critical nature of this bridge and what it means not only for Portland and Vancouver, but as was noted earlier, this is a regionally statewide and national bridge of importance. So $90 million were dedicated by the Oregon and Washington to get us through the planning phase. So we are, we are making good use of those dollars by doing tremendous outreach and putting forward a plan to get us to the next phase and eventually into construction. So what's different from the last time? We have a bi-state legislative committee that provides oversight and helps, helps us shape the program work. So there, we have a mantra with that group of no surprises. So we have been meeting with them once a month. And as of late, we've been meeting twice a month during this, during this key time period of the locally preferred alternative. The, the 10 partners that you will hear me speak about that, that their CEOs make up the executive steering group are the two DOTs, the two transit agencies, Trimed and C-Trans, the two regional planning councils, Oregon Metro, as well as Southwest Washington Regional Transportation Council, the two cities, as well as the two ports. So next slide, please. So this is a, a graphic of how we, how decisions are made and how the, the program team operates with a number of different entities giving us advice and input. So at the bottom, you will see our Equity Advisory Group as well as our Community Advisory Group. The Executive Steering Group sits off to the left. Those are those 10 partner, transportation partner agencies. On the right box is the, our other jurisdictional authorities and decision-makers, our federal partners such as Federal Transit, Federal Highway Administration, permitting agencies such as the US Coast Guard and the US Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the transportation commissions from each state reside in that box to the right. And finally, the, the box at the top is our bi-state legislative committee, 16 members, eight from each state, four from the State House of Representatives, four from the State Senate. And all of those arrows have a common nexus to the program administration team, which I am heading up. It's my privilege to, to lead this team as we are going through this process. Next slide, please. So the common question we get is, why, why are we looking at rebuilding the Interstate Five Bridge? And so the purpose and need that was established during the Columbia River Crossing days, these problems still exist and they have only gotten worse. The key time conscious of these purpose and need statements is the earthquake vulnerability. As, as most of you know, there is the, the tectonic phenomenon off the coast of Oregon called the Cascadia's abduction that generally every 250 year moves in a significant way, causing a sizable earthquake. Now, we are unsure whether the Interstate Five Bridge would survive in a major earthquake. So that is one of the pressing issues to get this done. But these other five purpose and need statements are, are just as relevant today and even more so than they were when the program ended almost 10 years ago. So safety impaired freight movement, congestion with over 143,000 vehicles crossing the bridge every day in 2019. That's seven to 10 hours of congestion, the inadequate bike and pedestrian paths. And finally, the governor's charged us with creating a high-capacity transit mode that will help share the burden and not just put the burden on the highway. So all of these six purpose and need statements need to be addressed in any solution that we put forward. So next slide, please. So we heard from, from the partners and from the communities that equity and climate are priorities that we must keep centered in this program. So we are looking to in past large transportation problems, black indigenous and people of color, people with disabilities were ignored in the process. So we are, we are looking to minimize the burdens on those communities and make sure that they take part in some of the benefits that a project of this size can bring to this region. So we have been asked to center equity and priority community for engagement and feedback. So we are, we are listening very carefully. When we do polls, we oversample some of the minority communities to make sure that their voice is heard in this program. We also are committed to supporting the state climate goals of reduction in greenhouse gases and emissions to improve air quality. And finally, improve the infrastructure resilience for future climate disruptions. Everyone remembers the 117 degree day we had last year. And this is, this is something that is projected, we will see come more often to this region. And we have to build a piece of infrastructure that can survive and function during these type of climate disruptions. Next slide, please. So here is a graphical representation of our locally preferred alternative. As you can see, the the four major items that we were, that were in question for this locally preferred alternative was what we, what we were going to do on Hayden Island. We had community working groups. We have a community advisory group that tells us that they wanted to see a smaller footprint on Hayden Island. And so what we, what we have decided to take into the next phase is a recommendation to study a partial interchange on Hayden Island, which moves some of the other interchange movements down to Marine Drive. On the right of this drawing, you'll see a light purple line that shows a, a local bridge that will allow access from North Portland onto Hayden Island. So we are, we are working through all of the, all of the engineering to make sure that this will work and try and have the least impact on the floating homes as you see depicted in this drawing. On the left side, you see a yellow line that is actually indicative of an extension of light rail from the Expo Center that will now cross the bridge and run along I-5 all the way up to Evergreen. So that is what we are proposing to study in, in this next phase. We are also looking at how many lanes will go across the bridge. Right now, there are three northbound, three southbound. We are looking to add an auxiliary lane in each direction. An auxiliary lane, we have a description of it further in the, in the presentation, but these are ramp to ramp lanes that help folks who are merging or leaving the freeway to do that in a smoother manner. So you're not causing accidents nor congestion. And finally, we have landed on the proposal of variable rate tolling across the bridge. This will, will achieve the goal of raising the funding needed to help build, build this bridge. But also it has a secondary benefit of changing those discretionary trips from the peak hours by having that rate be higher at the peak hour and move those discretionary trips to lower volume times, helping with congestion in the area. So on the partial interchange, Hayden Island will have the ability to leave the island without entering onto I-5, which will help make sure that congestion on I-5 is better. And also, we're looking to improve east-west connectivity. Right now, the, the interstate severs Hayden Island into the east part and the west part. So we are, we are looking to rebuild and reconnect roadways. We are also looking at a smaller interchange, leaving more space for, for pedestrian use and more use of open space on the island. So that was important to the, to the groups, to the focus groups that we pulled together to look at this issue. And once again, we are addressing safety on the island by improving active transportation, adding shoulders on the bridge, increasing the lane widths. Right now, the lane widths are anywhere from 11 feet to 10 and a half feet wide and making sure that we are improving the ramp versions. So the benefits of, of expanding light rail from the Expo Center to Evergreen, we have four new stations, we anticipate, and that will make 3,000 plus residents or more additional residents within a half mile walk of these new stations that are to be constructed. So that means a 26%, 26% increase in black indigenous people of color access to transit as well as a 41% of low income. And these are all within walking distance of the proposed transit corridor. Getting jobs or getting people connected with jobs is also a priority that we heard. And you can see the numbers of low income, BIPOC and people with disabilities, how this will improve their access to jobs in the region. From a climate standpoint, just by the mode switch of getting folks out of single occupancy vehicle trips and giving them an opportunity to, to ride high-capacity transit, we will be saving 36,000 metric tons per year of emissions into the atmosphere, which is the equivalent of powering 7,000 homes for a year or taking 89,000, 89,400,000 miles driven by gas-powered cars off the roadway. So this is, this is a big deal. We also have other strategies to combat climate change with this program. Looking at demand management, which variable rate tolling will be a part of that. We're also looking at increasing operational efficiencies. I'm using ramp metering and auxiliary lanes to reduce congestion in the corridor. The mode shift from cars to active transportation is, is going to be huge. And finally, having low carbon emission construction strategies. So these are, these are the underpinnings of the locally preferred alternative and some of the benefits that will accrue from, from this construction. So next slide, please. So real quick, we'll dive into what the transit investments mean in a little more detail. So if we can go to the next slide. So once again, we are recommending light rail running adjacent to I-5 rather than going to downtown Vancouver, which was going to be very disruptive to the plans that the city of Vancouver have. And once again, the, the IBR terminus will be near Evergreen. And this will, this does not preclude future projects that could extend if, if folks in Clark County decide that this is a, a mode of transportation that they like and want to further expand. So some of the other components that we will be looking at as we move forward, we'll be looking at park and ride lots, the size and location, the general station locations. We know that there is a desire to have a location on the waterfront where Vancouver is expanding greatly. We'll be looking at operations and maintenance facilities to help, to help maintain what we are going to build. And also, we'll be looking at other system improvements to make sure that there is a reliable trip on transit every time you step into that transit vehicle. So next slide, please. So here you see in the dash blue line where the extension of light rail in a dedicated guideway means that the light rail vehicle would not be mixed in with traffic. There will be a separate bridge that will carry light rail across the Columbia Slough to Hayden Island. And then it will be co-joined on the big bridge going across the remainder of the Columbia River and then run along the, the west side of I-5 up to Evergreen. And the great part about this, we are, we are building on the strengths of each transit agency. We know that C-Trans has a very robust We know that C-Trans has a very robust bus rapid transit system. And so we will be building on that strength, and we will be connecting that to this light rail as it crosses the river. So, next slide, please. So what we've heard, we have um, we have done tremendous outreach um within the community, the partners. Um, we've listened to the opposition uh who who don't like transit investment. So what we've heard is that um overall, the community working groups and the advisor groups are supportive of high-capacity transit options, with most preferring light rail over um pure bus rapid transit. And they really like the um light rail, bus rapid transit combined option that we have put in place. They tell us that uh congestion relief is a top priority and reliability of the mode is important. From the Equity Advisory Group, we we have heard that equity uh priority communities um have a high interest in dependable transit options. So they like the light rail option, and they wanna make sure that they stop at Evergreen is made as equitable as possible. So um people of um people of color, Black Indigenous populations, as well as folks of low income can access that station in a reasonable, easy way. So, next slide. So Hayden Island Marine Drive, let's go to the next slide, please. So we had options of continuing a full interchange on Hayden Island. And what we, what our recommendation is to go to a partial interchange. So we are, we know that the Port of Portland no longer has plans to develop the west end of Hayden Island. So the need for a full interchange was somewhat diminished. But we still need to make sure that folks can move uh from the island and get to the Marine Drive interchange. So our interchange design will seek to minimize impacts while making improvements to the freight and workforce traffic that lay along Marine Drive. We also um had some design assumptions that the North Portland Harbor Bridge will be replaced. The last go-around, this bridge was only gonna be seismically retrofit. So this gives us an option to do some more unique uh things to enhance um a partial interchange. We also know that the local auto access bridge between North Portland and Hayden Island will be tremendously important. So folks will not have to enter the I five traffic if they just wanna get to um Marine Drive and the destinations along there. So there will be um enhanced bicycle and pedestrian uh connections um to the shared-use path that's gonna cross across the river. And once again, there will be a high-capacity transit station um on Hayden Island to facilitate uh, once again, getting folks out of those single occupancy vehicle trips. Next slide, please. So this shows uh the Hayden Island um and Marine Drive interchange from different perspectives. So you can see that the Marine Drive interchange is a, is going to be a very complex interchange, and it's going to have to move a lot of people with some of those movements that were on the island now being taken and absorbed on uh Marine Drive. But you can see the, once again, the yellow is uh uh the light rail line going from Expo Center up to a to Evergreen and the uh the light purple, along with the light gray, is a shared-use path and the the um arterial bridge that will provide the other movements to the island. So, next slide, please. So what we've heard from from our Community Advisory Group is that there's a preference for the smallest footprint um over and on Hayden Island. Um, it's also important to consider the freight needs with with both ports uh being right in this general vicinity. Um, active transportation, safety, and access is um an important um consideration. From the Equity Advisory Group, um, we've heard that the summary demonstrates that equity was incorporated into the process. But they um, they were found it difficult to understand all of the information and trade-offs uh related to uh to the partial interchange on Hayden Island. They said it was crucial to focus on the human experience and and impact, and those are some of the things that we will be digging into into this next phase that we're hoping to go into. And they also made it key that wayfinding signage, because we're changing how folks access Hayden Island, that signing is gotta be a critical and clear as possible in order to move folks um in this complex um tangle of of ramps and local bridges. So, next slide, please. So the auxiliary lanes that um we're looking at, and we have um to to make sure folks understand that auxiliary lanes are no more than ramp-to-ramp lanes to give people more space to to merge and weave into um and out of the flow of through traffic. So let's go to the next slide, please. So this, this uh schematic shows, the top shows where there is no auxiliary lane. And you'll see that truck on the left side has to enter into, which means that that car just to its left has to slow down to allow that truck to enter into that um traffic flow. And on the bottom, you'll see that that truck has more room um to maneuver and merge into the flow of through traffic. Or if that truck is just going from one interchange to the next, it never has to enter into the flow of traffic. So there's uh good examples all over the region of um merge-weave lanes or or auxiliary lanes. One of the most successful ones is um, I believe it's um two-seven, State Road two-seventeen that um moves a lot of um traffic better and safer than the previous condition when folks had to merge in and then immediately get back off to their destination uh ramp that they were going. So we think this, this is gonna be safer and that it will also make sure that uh congestion is improved through this quarter. Next slide, please. So our recommendation is to study one auxiliary lane in each direction, both northbound and southbound across the bridge. And these um auxiliary lanes will be located between Marine Drive and Mill Plain Boulevard to accommodate the safe movement of both vehicles and freight. Because Marine Drive is the key entry point and exit point for freight vehicles going to the Port of Portland. And Mill Plain is the key connection for vehicles going uh to and from the Port of Vancouver. So we will be maintaining the three existing through-traffic lanes in each direction, uh which is consistent with the existing uh freeway system on either side of um of the project on either side of the bridge. Next slide, please. So this is a a diagram that shows um, number one, that there are existing auxiliary lanes that exist. So you'll see the top is, shows no build, but there are actually some auxiliary lanes that exist in the area that recognizes the close spacing of these interchanges. So um, the one auxiliary lane, once again, we will be um making a complete connection between uh Marine Drive and Mill Plain. And there will be um some other existing uh auxiliary lanes that already are there that we will be perpetuating into the future. The other option was to look at uh two auxiliary lanes. And you can see what that looks like on the bottom schematic. We know that um two auxiliary lanes um can move traffic better, but there are trade-offs that has has to occur. So we will be looking very closely at those trade-offs um and whether one auxiliary lane can accomplish the goals and the purpose and need of this project. Next slide, please. So here are some of the benefits. We do see travel time improvement. We do see reductions in overall congestion. And this is between one auxiliary lane compared to a no-build situation. Uh, we know that there will be uh an expected mode shift, uh that transit uh shares will increase from seven percent to eleven percent in the build alternative. Uh, fewer lanes, fewer lane changes are required, which means that uh folks who are in a through lane now will not have to move over nearly as many times to allow that merging traffic to um smoothly enter into the flow of traffic. So we know that um one auxiliary lane in each direction gives us greenhouse gas reduction due to less congestion. Um, we also know that there will be uh VMP reduction um and mode shift and um improvements in the climate due to tolling. So we will see also large safety improvements with uh one auxiliary lane uh being built. But this is what we're gonna take into the study and verify that one auxiliary lane can accomplish all of the goals that um that the partners and that the community have told us are important to them. So, next slide, please. So what we have heard is that um from our Community Advisory Group, they say combined with the transit considerations, one auxiliary lane is appropriate. Two auxiliary lanes addresses congestion and is a a very good value or the best value in their estimation. Um, congestion and safety are priorities, and auxiliary lanes help um address these priorities. So the Equity Advisory Group wanted to understand the difference in property impacts and displacements between one and two auxiliary lanes. And we will be um diving into that into the, in the next phase of the project. Um, travel time and environmental impacts are important. And also, uh, consider projected demographic changes that are occurring in uh southwest Washington and what that means for equity for folks who have to travel the bridge every day. So we did a community survey feedback, and once again, we heard relieving congestion and reducing greenhouse gas emissions are tremendously important. Uh, there's concern around potential impacts to residents, businesses, and neighborhoods. And finally, we did a scientific um opinion poll. A large majority support overall um one auxiliary lane receiving slightly more support than two auxiliary. So, next slide, please. So we are now at the phase of the project where we're asking um the partner agencies to um to give us the go-ahead to move into a supplemental draft environmental impact statement process. So as we wrap up the locally preferred alternative, July twenty-first, we will be looking for the um executive steering group, as well as later in that day, the by-state legislative group to um give us the thumbs up to move forward in taking this into the next um important public-facing phase of this project. And once again, we um, as we work through that, that will be about a year and a half uh process. We will be hoping to uh to then move on into uh preliminary design and uh take all of the study plans and authorizations to get to the desired outcome that the region has said is important for us to to um accomplish. So, next slide, please. So everyone is interested in uh how this thing will get funded. And um, the Washington County staff did a great job of of recognizing that this a program this large has the potential to um to take away from other statewide priorities. So we are very, very much aware of that. So let's go to the next slide, please. So right now, uh, we have a conceptual cost estimate that ranges between three-point-two and four-point-eight billion. We will be updating this um cost estimate um later this fall to, that will uh take into account all of these things that we have agreed to on a locally preferred alternative. So we are also looking at a variety of funding sources. Um, the state funding, as you may know, we received a billion-dollar pledge from the state of Washington for construction. Um, the federal dollars, um, we will be applying for federal grants beginning in twenty-twenty-three. But we also know that we have to go before the Oregon um Legislature in twenty-twenty-three with the ask of matching what Washington has done from a funding standpoint. And finally, we have um Federal Transit Administration capital investment grants or capital improvement grants that um we'll also be looking at um Federal Highway Administration's Competitive Bridge Investment Program, as well as a a National Infrastructure Project Assistance Program that we think very well fit uh the circumstances we have with the IBR program. Next slide, please. So on the variable rate tolling, we know that projects of this size across the country have um typically used tolling as a part of the uh funding picture. So we are, we feel that we will be no different, that tolling will need to be a part of this. But we know that our our program tolling and the tolling that ODOT is looking at on uh the I-five corridor and I-two-oh-five corridor south of the river um are separate. But they are related in that we have to understand and make seamless of how tolling will be done in this region. So our tolling objectives include revenue generation, uh managing uh congestion by having it be variable rate, and also to improve on the multimodal mobility in the corridor. So we expect um the rate to vary by time of day and day of week based on a set schedule, so the cost can be predictable for the traveler. We also um, the program is committed to recommending equitable tolling practices um informed by national best practices and some of the tolling work that's being done currently in Oregon and Washington State. So the um, the actual tolling rates and policy is not set by the IBR program. It's actual, actually a function of the Oregon Transportation Commission, as well as the Washington State Transportation Commission. And they will be looking at whether there will be exemptions and discounts. So we um are possibly looking at tolling as early as twenty-twenty-six. This would be called pre-completion tolling with the sole purpose of raising revenues to um help build a funding package to get this bridge done. Next slide, please. So right now, we are in the process of gathering feedback from the partner boards and councils, which um the Washington um County Commission has a a role to play with your role on J-PAC. So we are um, that board will make a recommendation to Metro. So it is important that we communicate both um in in this forum, in the J-PAC forum, and all other forums where uh Washington County folks will have a say in this. Um, we know that Executive Steering Group uh will be considering this adoption of a modified LPA um along with the by-state Legislative Committee on the same day, which will be July twenty-first. And those actions will allow us to move forward in taking this into the fall and winter into a supplemental draft environmental impact statement process. And once again, we will be updating the conceptual finance plan. And in twenty-twenty-three, we'll be talking um to the Oregon Legislature about um what this program needs are, and also talking to them about uh tolling authority uh that will be required to uh fulfill or to fill out the rest of the funding picture. We also, once again, in twenty-twenty- We also, once again, in 2023 anticipate applying for those federal grant opportunities that I spoke of earlier. So, next slide please. That, that wraps up my presentation and I'm, I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You've covered a lot of ground, literally.
This is, this is dense information and I, I'm sorry for flying through it very quickly, but hopefully you guys will have access to this presentation. And we're available for questions anytime that, that you guys need us to come back or you want to send questions to us.
Well, thank you for joining us today and hang in there for a little bit longer with us and we'll see what questions and information needs the board members have today. Your presentation was very comprehensive. Thank you. So commissioners, who has any, do you have any questions or any comments you'd like to contribute in terms of the, the ask from our staff today?
It looks like Commissioner Fai has her hand up.
Thank you. I've lost her window entirely.
Yeah, I was asking to be promoted. Sorry, that was it.
Oh, okay. Got you. I see you there. Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Johnson, thank you very much for this presentation. There is, there was a lot there. And I would just encourage my fellow commissioners. I, I meet with Representative McLean on a regular basis and have the opportunity to talk with her about, you know, what her thoughts are about the project from the Oregon side and also some of the issues from the, from the Washington side. And I would really encourage my fellow commissioners to, to meet with her as well because she gives us, she gives us the insight to what's happening in Salem in relationship to this project. So that's, I, I don't have questions. I'm going to look forward to meeting with our staff more in depth and making sure I understand all the, all the impacts for Washington County. But again, Mr. Johnson, it's nice to see you again and thank you.
Well, thank you so much. And if I can make a quick follow-up comment. Representative McLean has been just an outstanding partner in helping get this done. She is tremendously knowledgeable and tremendously supportive of getting the bridge done. So I want to acknowledge that. Her help has been tremendous help to me personally. So thank you for, for those comments and we're, we're right on board with you.
So Commissioner Treese will count you in in supporting the modified LPA. Thank you. Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Yes, thank you. That was, that was the first presentation actually I've seen. So thank you for that. It was, was very comprehensive and it was really good. I have, I have a variety of questions. And I, I think they're short questions. So the first thing that's of concern to me is, is the, is this design, does it increase capacity over what we have?
It does in, in a number of different ways. So it, it increases overall person throughput because with high capacity transit that doesn't exist in the corridor now, we're able to move more people with a, with a modernized bike and ped facility, we're going to be able to, to move more people through this corridor. As far as capacity on the highway side, we still have three through lanes in each direction and that is we're not going to expand from that, but what we're hoping to do is make sure that those three through lanes are serving their purpose and not being used as merge weave lanes or part of the merge weave movement. So in a sense that will, having auxiliary lanes will free up the, those three through lanes to do what they were originally designed for.
So basically the comparison, the putting together both the high capacity transit and the aux lanes, we're going to improve the efficiencies of the existing six lanes, basically three each direction. So that's what I'm, that's, that's what our aspirations are. The, the rail line, I'm really glad that we're looking at the rail line. So where is, where's the rail line in, in Vancouver? And then I'm not familiar with Evergreen, but what's the travel time then from, let's just say, the end of the line in Vancouver to downtown Portland?
So we, we don't have those numbers now. We are, we have some projections and I, I can, I can make sure those get sent to you. I can't quote them. But what we're looking at, we know that the yellow line currently that operates and ends at Expo Center, this will will be an extension of the yellow line. So we're going to be working with TriMet to make sure that the yellow line can operate as efficiently as possible. So it can be competitive with, with an automobile mode of moving people to downtown Portland and all points in between. So those are things that we will be digging into much deeper as to what the needs are of the system outside of the program area that we've shown. So it's going to be an interesting challenge.
Yeah, the yellow line, for us, it's the red line that goes out to PDX. So isn't, is the yellow, is that just kind of an extension of what we call the red line at PDX and the yellow line?
The red line, the red line actually runs west of, of I-5 and it's near the I-205 corridor. So the yellow line runs directly and stops at Expo Center, which is just south of Hayden Island and runs pretty much parallel to I-5.
Okay. I, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I got my lines mixed up there. And just maybe one more question. When we, have they looked at the impact of tolling the I-5 bridge that the travel will have on the Jackson Bridge, the 205 Bridge?
We have.
How's that going to work?
There, there's a couple of interesting dynamics going. So we know that ODOT's regional tolling plan looks, looks at tolling both I-5 south of our project limits and I-205. And so one of the interesting things that it does, even with a toll on the I-5 bridge, it starts to rebalance traffic because I-5 is the shorter trip mileage wise. So as you start freeing up some of the congestion and now you have a cost to, to drive 205, folks start migrating back over to I-5. That's what our models are currently showing. So we will be doing more modeling as we dig into the specifics of, of what that regional tolling plan looks like and how it fits into context with what we are doing.
Great. All right. Well, thank you. And I'll stop there. I've used up enough time. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Rogers, go ahead.
Hi Greg, it's good to see you. We normally see each other at the Region One meeting and you've done a good job here again describing, just a very few comments. We, for a long time in this region, wanted to fix that bridge. It's even if we did nothing, it's going to fall down one of these days just because of age and because of earthquakes. We, we know we have to do a few things. I, I want to maybe correct you on one thing. The aux lanes weren't on 217. They will be. It's on I-5 between Tiger and, and Tuolton and also out of Tuolton towards Wissler. Those are the aux lanes that are really improving. So just in your presentation, in case somebody says, well, we haven't seen
You are absolutely correct.
Yeah, not, not, not yet, but you will see what you said. Maybe just for suggestion purposes, there's some criticisms by those who don't like the project. And, and I'm going to throw them out so you can consider them and see how you might address them. Not today with me or anybody else, but one is when you minimize the footprint for the interchanges. I probably never told you this, but I grew up in that area. I remember when it was two lanes and one lane and it was gas station, all kinds of stuff down out there by Delta Park. But when you minimize that footprint, if traffic gets heavier as the region grows, do you have the expandability? And that, that's just something for you to consider and be able to answer in those interchange compressions. Another issue that is, is there is that, and Commissioner Willie was kind of picking that a little bit. There's a lot of people who say, I'm just getting a, a new version of an old bridge. Three lanes, three lanes is not fixing the problem. I mean, it's congested and it's going to remain congested. I understand the aux lanes, you're trying to get some of the local stuff off, but you might be prepared to, to say, well, how, how's that throughput as you call it? And you're doing that with the auxiliary lanes. How, how's that going to help? Because we, we need to be able to answer that. People are saying, you didn't give me anything, just a $4 billion new shiny bridge that I got the same amount of lanes on. So you, you might want to consider how to, to address that. Huge tolling issue. If the tolling goes for the bridge, that's great. But if the region starts to toll I-5 to the bridge, are, are going to be a series of tolls? And the answer probably is no, but if those tolls are diverted, meaning not for bridge replacement, but go to other jurisdictions, I can tell you, the business community in Washington County is not going to be very happy because I've talked to a lot of them. And they're saying, where, where do those tolls go? We don't disagree with tolls for improvements. But if they're simply diverted into, not picking on them, but Portland in this example, if they just get a new revenue source, people are not very happy about that. And that's, so we need to be understanding how to do that. And the question that was asked regarding won't shift to I-205, yeah, unless you toll both. But you know that the pressure then comes on Region One of ODOT because our friends to the east are saying, we don't want to even come into this area. It's congested. It's nothing but problems. Let's get, let's get the Hood River Bridge fixed. Let's get the bridge at the Cascades. And you know, there's a lot of pressure. And they're using their congressional assistance as well to see if there isn't some diversion of funds. So we, we need to be cognizant that we may be saying, we're going to use some funds to fix something and we're just shifting the proverbial problem upstream because they're going to say, we, we don't want to come in here anyway. What's shocking and I, you, you know this anyway, but maybe others don't. The port of Portland is not the preferred place to take goods out of anymore for a lot of our agricultural areas. It's Tacoma and Seattle. And so they're figuring out how to get to there without coming to Portland. And so I'm just wondering what all that's going to mean in terms of pressure on ODOT to fix other upstream bridges? What is going to put in pressure in the future long after you and I are maybe gone from this world? But there's a lot of pressure in Washington County in some sectors to put a new bridge through Washington County and over into Washington. All of our plants, they, they don't particularly want to go into Portland either, or even to the airport. They, they're going north. So somehow the story is bigger than just the fix of a local bridge. It always is. It always is. But I applaud the, the TriMet portions of it. Unfortunately, if we had more money, I, I don't think where you stop and makes any sense. We'd like to go north. There's, there's a lot of traffic that's coming out of, you know, just north of there. And if people could jump on light rail and go into Portland or go out to plants in Washington County, I mean, that would be terrific. So you don't have all the money in the world. They don't either, but hopefully it'll be a the genesis, I think, of a movement in the state of Washington to accept light rail and start moving it north because that's, that's the answer to a lot of traffic congestion. So just some comments. Thank you for, for being here. I support it.
Well, thank you. And I, I do appreciate those comments and, and the things you mentioned. And had not thought about some of the bridges further upstream and, and that diversion and folks avoiding the port of Portland to go to Tacoma. Those are, those are interesting observations. We, the one thing I do want to make sure that folks understand with a modern bridge, we, we cannot build our way out of congestion. You know, we could build as many lanes. We're still necking down back into a system that only has three through lanes in each direction. But having, having safety shoulders and having a smart bridge, we think is going to make this bridge much more safer and operate better and make your trips more reliable. From day to day, you can't project how long it'll take you to cross that bridge. And what we're hoping is that with just a minimal of, of changes, just adding safety shoulders across and through this corridor, that that's going to introduce reliability into your day-to-day trips across this bridge. So but great, great comments and our folks are taking good notes that we will be making sure we're, we're having answers for all of those things.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Fai, how about you? Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Mr. Johnson, thank you for your great presentation. This has been a, a long coming project. I've been sort of in like knee deep learning from our staff and I think we're set, I think, to endorse on the June meeting at J-PAC, but I think you know, you'll be hearing questions that we have through Ann Doyle and Chris Deckerback. But thank you for your presentation. I don't really have a question or other than to say, great job. You have a big responsibility and something big to make it happen for Oregon. I grew up in northeast Portland myself as well and have been part of this conversation, I would say, my, somewhat of my adult civic life. But looking forward to it and look forward to what diversion plans you come up with while the construction is going to take place. Let's be forward to being a big, big part of this in the future. That's all, Chair Harrington.
Thank you so much for, for the kind comments and I said, we look forward to questions that come up at J-PAC. We will, our team will, I'll be there and our team will be there to, to answer in depth, any, any questions or concerns that Washington County members or others may have.
Thank you, Commissioner Fai. Other commissioners, any last, before I go, any last remaining questions or comments based upon what you've heard from your fellow colleagues? No? Okay. Well, I will contribute my comments and questions. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for taking on this, this project and the role that you have as well as to the members of your program team. This interstate bridge replacement project is not an easy one. It's multifaceted. It's been going on a long time. Representative McLean was the Metro Counselor for District Four in Washington County before I was elected replacing her on the Metro Council. And this was the Columbia, the Columbia Crossing project before through all of that. And so here we are today with continued conversations, problem solving and, and work and even more challenging conditions with population growth, with further climate change impacts that we need to be prepared for. And the clock's been ticking with regard and the clock's been ticking, uh, with regard to the Cascadia-level earthquake. So let's hope we finish construction and get the sucker deployed and in use before we have such a catastrophic event. I don't mean to be the gloom person of the day. I'm really glad that you had an opportunity to, uh, speak to the reliability aspect of the project, with Commissioner Rogers', uh, comments, thank you, so I'll check that off my, my list to raise. I just have one question, and it relates a little bit to one of Commissioner Willie's questions. If we could display Slide 10 of Mr. Johnson's slide deck, it's the one that shows light rail going up to Evergreen. And I just have a minor question, Mr. Johnson, just to put you at ease. I see that you're a Detroit Tigers fan, I don't know about this.
Hey, we've won four in a row now.
Hey!
Well, I've actually seen a game at Fenway Park, and it is impressive.
So I'm sorry, who can, who can possibly show us that slide?
I was just gonna see if I could share, but I, I don't think I have rights to do that.
Yeah, I am working on that, just one moment.
Okay, thank you. Didn't mean to catch you off surprise, what my question is, Mr. Johnson, is, I understand that there are limits to how far light rail is being considered into Wa- uh, Washington State. And I wanted to better understand, one more, there you go, on this slide, I'm, from my standpoint, downtown Vancouver starts from the southerly portion of the river, further, uh, north, I can't remember if it goes beyond Fourth Plain or not, so I was, my question to you is, could you help me appreciate how much access to downtown the light rail in the dedicated guideway will have, um, terminating at Evergreen versus how a, um, a member of the downtown Vancouver, or just the general city population of Vancouver would experience light rail going to their downtown?
So, it's a, it's a great question, and our, our transit folks, um, they have a term that's called a walk shed. And walk shed is how many people can walk comfortably to a, a station location along an alignment? And so that, that number of 3,000 additional people, um, having access to now to light rail, that includes, um, not only folks who live on Hayden Island who will have access, but it also includes that walk shed in Vancouver. So, I'll, I'll tell you my personal experience, so the first, I've been here for almost two years, so the first 15 months I lived in, in northwest Portland. And in October, I promised the partners that I would live on each side of the river to understand the challenges. So now I live, um, very near downtown Vancouver. And it is a walkable community, I've walked to, uh, to the Evergreen location many times from where I live. And so I think there will be tremendous access, and the, the key is integrating C-Trans, Bus Rapid Transit, to, to integrate into that Evergreen station. And you can see there is a, um, a dark brown or maroon line that shows a, a future, uh, BRT line that will run along Mill Plain that will then intersect into the Evergreen, uh, location. So there is, um, there's a lot of plans by the city and by, uh, C-Trans to make this Evergreen station as, um, accessible and as equitable as possible with people who either walk or bike or ride, and there will be some limited parking rides that, uh, will also be able to help, um, draw trips to, um, to that new light rail extension. So there are some, um, some, some, a lot of thoughts that are being put into, into this location and making it as, uh, central to what, um, the economic development in Vancouver, in Vancouver is, uh, is planning.
Thank you, and, um...
So I, I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did, yes, you did.
There is a lot of, um, a lot of good conversation happening, and I'll make sure that that comment gets, um, relayed to, uh, the folks at C-Trans as well as the folks in, uh, at the City of Vancouver.
Well, and I think the team's done a good job on your website and right up front, having myths, uh, summarized and so forth. And I know as, uh, I've had the, well, I've been very intentional for the last, oh, over 15 years, not quite 20 years, about living closer to transit myself, and, uh, I was amazed, uh, living near the intersection of 185th and Walker Road, in West Beaverton, how many people would walk from Tanisborne down to the Willow Creek Transit Center to pick up Macs? Even though there were many bus lines to take you up that, uh, area as well, it's a healthy walk. Uh, but for Commissioner Willie's, uh, back of the envelope, um, uh, use perhaps, this blue line here on this map looks to be about a mile and a half, and, uh, taking, if you look at a blue line or a red line's current schedule between Willow Creek, which is right at 185th, you've got more than once, you've got Milliken then El Monica, which is about the same distance. But this map shows us that there are two stations in between, so I think, just for maximum extent, thinking the distance is greater to use the time in that schedule all the way to, um, uh, I meant Merlot earlier, sorry, uh, 185th Merlot, El Monica, then to Milliken, might give you some approximate ideas, uh, for timing while the, um, team continues to work on details, that's all. Sorry, I, I'm an estimator scenario kind of person, so, uh, and, uh, while I haven't been clear yet, uh, count me in as being a supporter of this modified LPA. So, uh, you may get some additional questions, but thus far through the presentation today, you have at least three of us who are on board with the modified LPA, uh, for, for moving forward. So hopefully we'll, we'll get it to unanimity here pretty soon.
I'd, I'd like to thank you for, for, um, for the time that, that you gave me in the, in the intense listening. This is, uh, very dense material, it's a complex project, and, and as was noted earlier by Washington County staff, this is, this is a regional project, and it has regional ramifications, so your interest, I think, is, is well warranted.
It looks like Commissioner Willie has something more he'd like to add.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I haven't heard a yea or a nay, except for out of Pam, so I'm just wondering where you got your three. I'm supportive of what, uh, of this plan, so, I like what I heard.
Commissioner Rogers earlier said he was supportive?
Okay, and I am-
Oh, great, thank you. I was, I was allowing for the possibility that you might have some other questions or wanted to get some further detail on your answer, so terrific. Great, great.
Well, thank you Chair and Commissioners, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, we very much appreciate your time and, uh, the briefing today.
Go Red Sox. Alrighty, well, thank you very much team for bringing that massive project forward to us. Onward ho you go, including Commissioner Phi at the J-PAC table. I hope it will go smoothly because we need this bridge replacement project.
Indeed, thank you.
So Commissioners and leadership, is there anything more for, uh, today's work session meeting? Ms. Fuller, go ahead.
Chair Harrington, uh, Erin Doyle is prepared to respond to the questions on the vertical housing development proposal, if you, you'd entertain that.
Yes, thank you for remembering that, go ahead Ms. Doyle.
Thank you, um, good afternoon again, Board of Commissioners, I appreciate you giving me the time to, to run down some of the answers. So the two questions that I heard and got answered was, one, confirming my answer related to Commissioner Willie's question about the data that was presented. That is not cumulative numbers, that is year, that tax year's set of numbers in that income revenue estimation chart. Um, the other question was kind of around how the vertical housing development zone sits within the urban renewal and the impacts to county revenues and what that really means. So I wanted to clarify some things, so I, I think got a bit jumbled this morning. The urban renewal area is in existence already, that urban renewal, um, program has been in place in Beaverton since 2011, and it consists of the massive, um, downtown efforts that they're making, and it has a pretty wide set of boundaries, and that project plan is up on Beaverton's website. A number of, uh, Beaverton has vertical housing development zones that pre- that, um, are being offered for expansion here. They already sit within those urban renewable, renewable areas, and therefore those revenue impact statements that are provided in the memo reflect how the revenues are impacted with a tax exemption in addition to the TIF financing increment set aside that happens with our revenues. So you can, you can get an estimation of what would happen as, um, vertical housing development zones will have impacts within the URA. I would also like to clarify that the tax exemption, regardless of where it is placed, either inside the urban renewal area or outside, each project only gets 10 years of that exemption. So just because it's inside the urban renewal area does not mean it gets to have the tax exemption for any longer than any project would be that was outside of an urban renewal area. So those 10 years limit the tax exemption, but also because it's sitting inside the urban renewal area, the majority of the improvements would go to feed the, um, increment calculation, and so the vast majority of the exempted property tax sits within that increment that would go into the Urban Renewal Agency and therefore is specifically placed there by the City of Beaverton to minimize impacts to our actual revenues, because it's, we still get our base rate through the, the property rate calculation that exists within the side of the urban renewal area. So I hope those, that further information clarifies for you Commissioner Rogers and for you Commissioner Willie, those questions that arose because of the urban renewal layer to this conversation. And I'm happy to follow up on anything else.
Erin, one quick thing, I, I've gotta run unfortunately for another meeting, but, uh, my, my point moot, and the reason it's moot is because of what you just said. I'm, I was concerned that we were placing things in an urban renewal district, and, and then we, uh, in our need for cash, we, we would have, uh, had some indefinite period, if it's already in an urban renewal district, it, it doesn't matter what the credit might be to the landlord or the owner of the building, because they're, uh, they're gonna receive all the funds within that urban renewal district anyway, so. You, you've completely answered my question, it's moot, and I, I like these, I wasn't opposed, I just thought it had a financial impact on the, on the county in the future, but it, it won't, so, I get it.
I appreciate that.
Roy, I, I don't know if you dropped off already, um, but I guess my, my comment would be similar to Roy's, except for the fact that when we give this tax exemption to the vertical housing, it impacts the urban renewal district, it doesn't impact us. So, um, so I guess I'm okay with that, um, and certainly looking out into the future, again, keeping an eye on, on our, uh, increasing demand, uh, on our budget, that it would behoove us to pay attention to when somebody comes to us with an urban renewal district request that we be looking at how that does impact us over the longer period of time, rather than just in the immediate. So anyway, thank you for that information, uh, Erin, that certainly makes much better sense now, thank you.
Excellent, glad to hear it. So my assumption then Chair is that the overall will of the board is to just opt in, and therefore staff needs to do nothing further. Thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Commissioner Phi, did you wanna give a verbal signal? That you're ready to-
Yes, I'm ready to proceed, I gave also my thumbs up this morning, Chair Harrington, yeah.
Thank you.
It's good for me.
Thank you, alrighty. Okay, does anyone have anything else for today? Hearing and seeing none, we'll adjourn today's work session. So everyone get your ballots in by 8:00 PM, or at least get them to the post office so they can be postmarked today, that's the new feature. Good night, everyone.